Sure, this working? There you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could just have a moment of silence for Marty Ashby, Ask Way, and Lisa. Please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Here.
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 Mayor Marshall.
Here.
But I would like to start by just saying hello. So I think I'm not just here today, sure Alex Bianueva. And it's a little bit bizarre. I kind of have our county come up and introduced you, Mark, and maybe we could talk about this for a visit. I had to see him a couple years ago.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. Members of the community, thank you for coming out. We have the honor of having our Sheriff of Los Angeles County, Alex Bianueva, who's with us this evening, who'd like to have a committee discussion. And members of the audience are welcome to ask questions or make comments during the meeting. We will be available after the meeting for anybody who wishes to meet with the sheriff outside. Sheriff?
Thank you, Captain Badali. Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to speak to this lovely city and your leadership and the committee members who are here. This is our very first in-person town hall since the pandemic began. So we're very fortunate. I know we've weathered a lot of adversity, and I'm pretty sure here on the island as well. I lost 12 members of my department in the span of about three months, and I was just going left and right. And then another four died in other reasons. Tom Alvenesi, behind the motor accident, you saw that, and others through just unexpected deaths that really hit everybody hard and right on top of the pandemic. So it's been tough. And I know out there in the community, everyone who lost a loved one due to the COVID-19, and you know, thoughts and prayers for everyone that had to deal with that. It looks like we're going to get into the yellow zone, which is finally a ray of sunshine, you know, working its way through the darkness. And we did an awful lot during the pandemic to keep the community safe. We had the big issues with the civil unrest and behind the George Floyd murder. And thankfully, we got all of the department deployed out there throughout the community supporting LAPD, Santa Monica, Long Beach, Beverly Hills. We were everywhere. Wherever we found a fire, we put it out, and it stayed out. So it did not spread. We did not have the disasters of 1992. Ninety-two, I was a young deputy, and I saw the mistakes of my predecessors, Sherman Block and Daryl Gates, and I thought, we're not going to repeat that. We're going to take action, affirmative action when we see civil unrest. We want to protect the rights of peaceful protesters by all means. That is the hallmark of our institution in the former government of the United States. The First Amendment is alive and well, and we'll protect and defend it. However, people decided to hijack these protests and, under the cover of them, engage in looting, rioting, arson, all these different things that were going on, vandalism. And we had to put a stop to that. So thankfully, no one was killed, no one was seriously injured under my watch, and that was just the hard work from a lot of people throughout the department, working partnership with LAPD, with the National Guard, and all the other police departments that we support. So it did work. And then thankfully, after the results of the Derek Chauvin trial, we did not have any return to that. So I think we've turned a corner for the better. We have other challenges in front of us now. Violent crime is rising 113% this year alone. It went up 36% last year. Homicides, up 113% this year. And homelessness continues to rise. The toll is mounting. A lot of communities are visibly frustrated and angry at the encroachment of all these homeless encampments and then all the quality of life issues that entails. We think there's a way forward that we're going to pursue. We're going to work with partnership with the city and county government, and we're definitely going to do some things different because we're not going to repeat mistakes of the past and somehow expect a different result. That's insanity. We're not going to do that. And we're going to start by doing the obvious, which is regulating public space, something that was a missing element in the past. We're going to start doing that. And we want to work in partnership with the community. You have Captain Joe Badali here, who is now selected by your city's leadership as your chief of police. So wear him out, he makes enough money. Joe and I go back a few years. Neither of us had gray hair, I think, when we worked together. But we still have some hair, I guess, so it's not too bad, right? As my barber says, quit whining, you got hair to cut. But we're excited about 2021 and 2022 as well. And I know this community is going to face an onslaught of people eager to spend money. They're pent up, and we want to make sure that you're ready for the challenge, that onslaught, and make sure we don't have any negative situation that arises out of all this newfound freedom that people are going to enjoy now, as we saw in other places like Las Vegas and so forth. But with that, I'll kick it back to you. Any questions I can take, I take them all.
So you had some question cards, I think, that some people are filling out, or do we just want them to come up one at a time to the mic? If we have cards. I'm sorry? Yes, okay. If anybody, I know Randy, Richard, anybody, somebody in the back there? Come on, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, thank you, Chief, or Sheriff, Captain, and the other firemen and the ladies. I'm Frankie from Avalon.
You're going to need to speak into the microphone, please.
I'm Frankie from Avalon. I moved here with my family in 1958. That's before the sheriffs were here. We had the Avalon Police. And they were really good workers, and they were always...
Continue, just talking to the mic.
They were good workers, they were always downtown. When we had Buccaneer Days, that's when, the year after that, we had the sheriffs come over because the crowds are so large, they could not handle the crowds. And that's really what happened. But today, years and years later, I run into situations in my own experience without even speaking to anyone else. I get almost four or five accidents every week. This Friday, I almost ran over two guys who were drinking in the middle of the street. It was dark, and I didn't see them, and I stopped. And I said, what are you doing on this street? And they cussed me out, and they were drunk. And I was upset at that. The next day, I was leaving the church, the Catholic church, at nine o'clock, and there's two girls walking across the street, dark, I couldn't see them, and they're playing with their...
They're talking to the microphone.
As they're walking, you can't... They weren't looking. I almost ran over them. That's Friday, Saturday, just happened. Every day when I'm driving, every stop sign, no one stops. I get hit almost four or five times a week. And that's the truth. And I typed it down. What I'm asking for is, I wish more of the sheriffs could be downtown where all the actions are. I see a Jeep go through in the morning at eight, and that's it. So there's people driving cars down there, there's people riding bikes off limits, and they're smoking dope while they're walking. And every place you go, you stop, and people run over you almost. So that's my comments.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me.
I'm sure they're here, then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, do you want these to be two-minute timed also?
Oh, okay. Thank you. And two-minute timeline, please, on your discussions.
If there's a question very, very specific to an island issue alone, I'll definitely let Captain Badali handle that because I refer to him.
No, I totally get that. Okay, who else? Nobody else really has anything they want to talk about or ask or...
Hi, I'm Valerie Bumbarger. My husband and I just bought a house here a few months ago. And I just want, I don't have a question. I just want to know, I want you to know how much I appreciate all of you and what you do. I think you have a very difficult job. I really appreciate the dedication and the caring that you put forth. I've met Sergeant?
Captain.
Captain Badali and Grayson Klein, and they have been absolutely fabulous. It's been really nice to get to know them a little more than just if you called the police and talked to them about a problem, you know? So I just want you to know how very much I appreciate everything, all of you do, the firemen, everyone. I think you have an extremely difficult and challenging job, especially in these days, these days. And I just want you to know that I think you're all great.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Do you have any comments, Michael? Anything that might have come through your way?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. And we have council members. Do you have any questions or comments? Lisa?
Hi, thank you, Sheriff Bianueva and your staff and Board of County Supervisor staff who's there today. I'm so sorry I couldn't meet with you today. I am up north in Stockton with family for the week. And just wanted to thank you for coming. Thank you for hosting your staff on the island today. I'm encouraged by the work of the previous captain and excited to start working with Captain Badali. And we've received appreciatively a lot of support from the sheriff's team, especially when there were marches and protests and things supporting events and happenings both here on the island and on the mainland. Having a minority-majority community and knowing just how important some of the actions that have taken place after each of these meetings. And after the death of George Floyd and the death of Breonna Taylor and the death of so many others and the death of, you know, just trying to keep people informed and hopeful. Your sheriff team on the island has been phenomenal in being there at those events, both in part to make sure that people are being safe, but also in being appreciative and understanding what people's concerns are, talking to people about each of those events, being open and having dialogue. I cannot thank your team enough for the amount of time and effort they've put into those, even when they had concerns about some of those events moving forward. Their willingness to work with us and be there for those events, I think, spoke volumes to the community. So I do want to say thank you for that. I know that your job and your position is not easy. I know that funding is tight, and politics are always fun and exciting in L.A. And, you know, so I appreciate where you and your team are coming from. But I am encouraged to see some things changing. I'm excited to see inactions of different policy changes that will help make both your deputies and our community safer. And I'm open to comment afterwards. I know that, you know, you were meeting with everyone today, so I apologize, I couldn't be there for that physically, but hope that we can touch base afterwards or touch base with your staff and keep some of those discussions going. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have someone who has messaged me, they're at work and they can't get on. The question is, what is the captain going to do to minimize the underage public drinking?
Not only is it drinking, but a number of issues that deal with our youth. And in terms of underage drinking, we are working with ABC to, one, look at the source of them coming over and doing investigations as it relates to beverage control. And in terms of the minors who may be drinking, it's always helpful for us to not only be out and about, but if someone's aware of an issue or a problem, be it juvenile's drinking or any other issue of concern, please just let us know. And we can be everywhere all the time. And oftentimes, it's the community who's our eyes and ears that are helpful in giving information to us, which we can then, in turn, do an investigation and/or detention of a juvenile or anybody committing crimes for that matter. So letting us know will increase our presence. We do have some future visits by ABC, who will be coming to the island to see how they're getting the beverages, if they're selling to underage individuals or not. Or if they're out and about somewhere, just please reach out to us and let us know, we'll immediately address the issue.
I think you guys are also going to be here a little bit after the public part of the meeting as well for any questions that...
They're going to go outside. Yeah, hang up there.
Yeah, well, before we leave, yeah, we'll be outside.
Right. Okay, well, if there's, I don't know if there's any summary, but if there's not, we really want to thank you and all of your department for coming. And thank you, Joe, and the local force. And we will be seeing you all later.
Yes, I will say in closing, real quick, I know someone raised the issue, in fact, the councilwoman about reform or about, you know, they mentioned George Floyd, Breonna Taylor. And there's a movement by some people to try to paint with a broad brush the entire profession as defined by the actions of Derek Chauvin. And it's a false narrative, I don't accept. If we do have an issue, we do have someone who violates policy, violates the law, does something, just is not up to the standards of our department, they're held accountable. And they will no longer be part of the department. And that's, I've done that since day one, and I'll continue to do that. Because my job is to maintain the high standards of the organization. But I also have to defend the hard work of everyone wearing tan and green, the ones wearing blue or the ones in green, doing all that hard work, doing the right things for the right reasons, and making a difference every day. You saw the tape that came out from San Dimas over the weekend, it's been all over the news, of a lady berating and calling a deputy a murderer and racist, a murderer, Mexican, wannabe white, this, that, and else. It was just horrific. And the deputy was absolutely unflappable, didn't bat an eye, and was very polite the entire time. And that is the type of things that we're facing that don't often make the news, but this one was caught on high-definition camera. So just in closing, I want to let people know that we, I reformed this department from the ground up, and we've made so many changes. And one of them is, yes, we're pushing accountability, we're pushing transparency. We have body-worn cameras now. We'll get them here on the island, we're not there yet, but the island will see them before the end of the summer. So we'll have the body-worn cameras here as well.
Wow.
Might catch a lot of the tourists doing very dumb things, but that's okay. That's what body-worn cameras do. So anyway, with that, thank you all for the opportunity.
Great. And let me ask you another question. Are you recruiting, is recruitment for positions in the county, is that ongoing?
We're always recruiting. We've had a freeze, a hiring freeze, but we're still recruiting, and we expect to have an academy class come up, hopefully as early as next month. So we are, every, the first Monday of every month, we open it up for about 20 minutes, and all of the spots get taken right away by people.
What's the minimum age?
Twenty, 20 years of age.
Okay.
It's a time of appointment.
Oh, okay, great. All right. So if any of you are interested in becoming a deputy sheriff, let us, let them know.
We will hire. And we hire locally only, we don't hire out of state. So I'd love to have an Avalon resident become a deputy to serve their own community.
That would be wonderful.
That would be cool.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
You got it.
Just real quick also, is there an email or guess where visitors and residents can send questions to Sheriff Bianueva?
I'm sorry, did, repeat the question.
Is there an email address that people can send questions to Sheriff Bianueva and/or Joe Badali? What would be the best email to send to for questions to ask about policy, ask about local issues?
Yes, I have a number.
Yeah, so the 24-hour number you can reach us at would be area code 213, 229, 150?
Seventeen hundred.
Or 1700.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, one more time, I'm so sorry.
213, 229, 1700.
Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. All righty, announcements. Did you want to make your typical announcement at the beginning, too, Denise? About streaming and sending comments?
The city council meeting can be viewed on the local cable Catalina Broadband Solutions. It's streaming on the City of Avalon website, which is cityofavalon.com/meetings. It's also on Facebook, facebook.com/cityofavalonofficial. And you can submit ecomments at the Granica Ideas. And also, the general public may participate in oral communication addressed to City Council on an agenda item in person by practicing social distancing while waiting in the City Hall courtyard and entering the chambers one at a time at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Are there announcements or written communications?
Yes, I need to turn to see if there's two new faces in the audience that I wanted to introduce.
Are the two new faces here?
I'll wait till they come in. It's the new people that took over at the fuel dock, and I wanted to introduce them so you'd see their faces.
Okay.
So let's move to proclamation.
Mayor Protim. Is that good?
Yep.
Perfect.
Proclamation?
Yes.
Before I actually embark upon my part of this, I would like to ask if Jim Louis Yahn could come up and give a little preface to the importance of this week.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. And each year, this week of the year, I've made a point of coming and standing in front of you to tell you about the importance of travel and tourism, not only to our local economy, but to our state and nation. Because the first week of May is National Travel and Tourism Week. We've been celebrating that every year since 1983. And the State of California adopted May as Tourism Month starting in 2016. Each of those organizations develops a theme, and this year's theme from California Tourism is really apropos of what we're about to do. It's called "The Power of Possibility." And there's probably no one person in our community who has better embodied the power of possibility with regard to travel and tourism than the young man that we're going to honor. As a teacher at Avalon School, he has informed the future of tourism, not only on this island, but for many who will take those skills learned here out and work in the rest of the industry. And so I think that's a little setup.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like to stand with me?
Of course.
Would you like to...
Hello. This is Mr. Paul Romo, one of our teachers in our local school here at Avalon. And it is my honor to present to you a proclamation from the City of Avalon on behalf of the City Council and the community of Avalon. So this is a proclamation from the city recognizing Paul Romo for his work in hospitality and the tourism industry. Whereas Avalon High School first offered career technical education, hospitality, and tourism courses during the 2018-2019 school year. During the 2020-2021 school year, 40 of the high school's 135 students enrolled in the hospitality and tourism courses. The beginning course introduces students to the history of hospitality, tourism, career exploration, and personal budgets, job hiring processes, and interviews, communication, guest services, marketing, and the lodging, resort, and cruise ship industry. The immediate course teaches students international travel, ecotourism, and hotel and food management. Hospitality and tourism courses provide opportunities for hands-on learning and for applying career, leadership, and personal skills in real-world environments, with students securing internships with the Catalina Island Company, and students held events which included a food truck race event and a family movie night in the casino building, which had over 500 community members attend. Eight of 33 seniors will graduate in June, having completed two years of the program, and 10 students completing year one of the program. Therefore, the City of Council of City of Avalon would like to thank Paul Romo and his efforts of teaching our local children the importance of the hospitality and tourism industry and the critical role this industry plays in Avalon, dated this fourth day of May 2021. And as a member, as two members of your advisory board, we are so thankful for what you have brought to our community, and we're very proud.
Thank you.
Did you, did you take it with you? Oh.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to introduce two important people.
Yes.
These two are from Deion &amp; Sons, and they are the company that took over our fuel dock facilities on Saturday, May 1st. And I have Madison Kolen and Ricky Burks. This is the first time I've seen them in person. We've only met over Zoom many times.
Come on up.
And please tell the council what you've been up to out there for the last few days.
Hi, it's great to be here. Thank you so much for having us. My name's Ricky Burks, I'm the manager of Deion &amp; Sons Marine Fuels. We're really excited to be awarded the fuel dock and look forward to working with everyone. Everyone that's been down from Avalon residents to city employees has been overwhelming with support in pretty much anything we need. We've already started pulling the convenience store apart and remodeling that. It's going to be more of a full convenience store. And yeah, we're just looking to improve everything that's down there and make it more user-friendly for everyone.
Nice. And Madison, what is your role?
I hope do the account program, so I kind of do marketing in the account program, so I'm out here helping. And if anyone wants to stop by and see what we've been up to, we'd love to have you guys down there. We've had a few people stop in, and it's been super awesome.
Just for one second, my eyes are bad, but one second, can you pull down your mask so people can get a better look at your face?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, congratulations, good luck. We're very excited. And, boy, I didn't realize that was coming together that quickly with the fuel dock. So thank you, Denise and staff, however that got going, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it's been great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I do want to give a shout out for one particular staff member, and that was Devon Hart. She was very instrumental, and from the RFP to working with each of the members at Deion &amp; Sons, and really made it all come together. So I'm very thankful for her.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Devon. Okay, any other written communications?
I do not have any written communications.
Okay, Department head reports?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got six items reported out. First one's beach sand. It's that time of year, so this year, we're not going to have a robust $20,000 effort. We're going to be much smaller than that. So a mon, replenishment effort will be completed before Memorial Day weekend. We've been waiting so that the sand doesn't wash out with all the storm activity we had this year. At South Beach, the existing sand will be relocated within the beach there, and at the existing sand will be relocated within the beach there. And at Step Beach, we'll actually bring in about three to four truckloads and replenish that. And so everything should be in order before Memorial Day weekend, hopefully sooner than that. But we need to work around everything else that we're doing.
Yes.
We're gonna, on May 14th, I'm gonna tour over to the mainland, two wastewater treatment facilities, and look at the screw press in full-size operation. If you recall, we reported the city demo to small-scale test screw press on the island at our wastewater treatment plant, and that went very well, that demo. And it got us interested in getting the true data of operations at a plant. So I'm gonna go visit two plants and talk to the operators of that equipment, so that when, if we do make the decision to purchase one of those, we have, you know, firm backup for it. So if you recall, the screw presses, it actually is another method of processing the solids when our wastewater treatment stream. It will save us potable water. We use a lot of potable water in the centrifuge process that we currently use, and it will save also additionally energy. So much less energy use in this. Pebley Beach Road revetment, where we're still working on the permits. We're very close though to getting those. This week at Avaloni Point, there was a little subsidence of the pavers at Avaloni Point, where we have the guard, the rails there, guardrails already in place, barricades. And that, you know, that's, again, that's a sea cave that's deteriorating underneath, just like it was in a location without pavers. So we've protected that for the interim. And I'm reminding everybody that we will be starting that project in this summer, and there will be traffic control on Pebley Beach Road. And I've reported that out. So don't be surprised when we actually get the project up and going, and we actually have some visitors on the island. But we'll keep everybody moving during that project. The Active Transportation Plan, on April 29th, we held our first community meeting virtually for the Active Transportation Plan, and we were seeking input from the community. We had about 13 people attend that virtually. And then last Saturday, May 1st, we had a walk audit for the project. The walk audit is where the residents or visitors, they provide input of the existing conditions. And we did this also virtually, so you would think, you know, that we were able, online, be able to look at photos, and they can look at a location, say, oh, maybe that isn't the best for walking or biking, and they can offer possible solutions. We're gonna do that again this weekend, and that will be available at 10 o'clock. And so the way that you would join that is you would go to cityofavalon.com/ATP and you'll get more information. We have a flyer that tells all the information on that. One additional way you can do that is you actually, there's a little kit that you can go and you actually do a walk audit yourself. Because of COVID, we're not doing it normally the way we would do it in groups. So that's an additional way of doing it and providing input. And we expect all that to be wrapped up within the next couple of weeks. So if you're interested in putting input into that, please get on it. And reporting out that at Cabrillo Mall, where we finished up on Phase 1 of the wharf there, we have now restriped for tenant parking. There's 10 spaces back there behind the building. And the intent of the parking is for employees that are actively working there, not for any other use. It's not for overnight parking. So we want to move those employees that are parking now on the ramp or in other areas around there, moving behind the building so that frees up the space for the general public.
And let me ask a question on that. So if I decide not to move my car, who's going to be around to do anything about it?
We have Jesse out at the mall that would be able to ticket them first thing in the morning, or our code enforcement. And we will be enforcing any employees. We'll just be ticketed automatically if they're parked on the ramp, because we really want that traffic flowing through and to get the residents that are picking up their family members to park.
Okay. And code knows who the, like Jesse knows who all the people are that work out there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And just so everybody knows, that whole area around the mall, we have cameras everywhere. So we actually, we have recordings of what's happening out there. So it doesn't actually have to be somebody there at the moment. If we, having people, if it's not working good, we can look at that film also. And then the striping in the parking lot will be restripped soon. And so then, the last item I have that is very important, is that we had additional hours authorized by the city manager for O and M. So starting tomorrow, we'll go to a 90% schedule. It's very important. The additional 10% was authorized in response to an increase in visitors in preparation for the busy summer season. Additional resources will focus on the cleanliness of the visitor areas, and also as well as landscape maintenance. This will provide for two public maintenance workers on Saturday and Sunday, and additional to having extra hours during the week, so that we can focus on that pressure washing, that landscape, so that when the visitors come to the island, that everything's ready to go. Any questions?
That's great. And thank you, city manager, for doing that as well. I know that these decisions are tough. So, great. Good. Any questions of Bob? Nope, we good? Okay. Captain Allegria? Chief Allegria?
Captain today.
Captain.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay.
So I start tomorrow as chief. Excited, looking forward to it. Can't wait to get going. Already been doing a few things. Also tomorrow, we'll start, all our shifts are shaken up a little bit. We went through in-house promotions. We had LA County Fire lifeguards and LA County Fire Department on our oral boards with Chief Krug. And so tomorrow, we'll start Philip Menudo's first day as captain, Ryan Keyline's first day as engineer, and James Buddies, our new full-time benefited firefighter. So now, my job starts. I need to go out and recruit reserves. That's going to be my number one. I've already got a few in my sights, so that's going to be my number one priority. And then also, just to let everybody know, it's been a while, but I want my guys out there, starting June 1 on inspections, because build people, you know Avalon, there might be some new walls or something in there. So I want the guys in every building, walking through, checking it out. So inspections will start June 1. And then the day, we had a walkthrough with Olivia and Josie from the hospital, and a nurse from St. Mary's, her disaster preparedness. And they're gonna come back and do another, hopefully stop the bleed, where they work with tourniquets, and we, you stop the bleed and go over some more disaster stuff. We went through their trailer, but they're looking forward to coming over, doing a lot more training with us for a big disaster.
Right.
And that's it.
So if somebody was interested in being a reserve, can they just, how does that happen?
Have them contact me and I'll walk them through it.
Okay, excellent. Okay, great.
Or any one of the guys.
Yes, all right, perfect. Any questions of the chief list?
Captain, soon to be chief Allegria. Just was gonna ask you, I saw a couple of requests for CPR first aid certification, and wondered if you had any scheduled classes coming up, or if they should call the department, and if you're still a client person for that, or put someone else now.
They could contact, call the fire station. They'll get in touch with me, and we'll set up a couple of classes.
Okay, thank you.
And just remind everybody about weed abatement, June 1st.
Yes. Yes, Anya, did you have something?
I did. I'm very excited for you, Mikey. But I do have a question. At last council meeting, you did mention you were looking for funds, COVID funds. Is there any update on that?
Not yet. I'm gonna meet with Matt next week, and we're gonna go over some stuff.
Thank you.
Michael? Cindy, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Captain Chief? Oh, here comes Matt.
Didn't he have our meeting tonight?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
I just have one item for council. And that's just a reminder really to the public that there is a public hearing scheduled regarding the cost of service study for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste. That meeting is scheduled for the June 1st council meeting. If you need any additional information, please visit www.cityofavalon.com-assessments, and that should be up on everyone's screen for those watching from home. Or you can always contact the finance department. Other than that, any questions?
And I want it noted that we've received a lot of returned public notices, and that's because we use the roster from LA County. So if they have your address wrong, you're not receiving it. We have remailed some that we know personally that they actually own the property and that they're here in town. So anyway.
Just to put it to scale of the 1,400 or so we mailed out, 50 to 70 maybe have come back. So the vast majority have gotten to their destination, but we did have some returns.
Just in case you hear that, I didn't receive mine.
Right, okay, great. Great. All right, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Just a quick question on that. If I have a situation where there were maybe 11 envelopes sent out to the same address, do you want to know that? No, because, well, go ahead, Matt.
So if there are multiple, if an owner owns multiple parcels, to play it safe, we still sent one letter out for each parcel they owned. So if their mailing address was the same for multiple parcels, they would have received multiple notices.
Or required to send them every property.
Yep, that makes sense. Unfortunately.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Matt. Community Services?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Just a few reminders and updates from the community services department. Tomorrow is our last day for T-ball registration. We start this Saturday. We've got a few spots left. The ages are three and a half to eight-year-olds. So T-ball hitting off the tee, older kids will get coach pitch. The Saturday group, the three and a half to five-year-olds go from 10 to 10:45, and the six to eight-year-olds go from 11 to 12. You can register online at recreation.cityofavalon.com, or just come into city hall and we'll take care of you that way. Summer day camp, we've also started registration for summer day camp, so that's up and available. Themes like Olympics this year will be one. Everything Catalina Week, Under the Sea Week, everyone's 9 to 3, and that starts June 21st, our first week of camp. Our cleanup day, the Rotary Cleanup Day has been changed, have been moved. We just had one a couple of weeks ago. We're gonna spread them out a little bit. So Cleanup Day will not be this Saturday, it'll be the following Saturday, the 15th, from 9 to 10:30 across the street at Kids Park. Love to have you out for that. Primetimers, we've got a couple things starting next week. We get back into the water for water aerobic classes on Wednesdays and Fridays. We're due to start on Wednesday, but I think it's gonna get pushed back to Friday as well, Friday the 14th. And that'll be at the Holiday Inn Pool. Thank you Nicole and her staff there for letting us use the pool. 8:30 to 9:30 on Wednesdays and Fridays. And then lastly, we gotta be getting close. Look what I've got in hand.
Uh huh.
What is it?
It's a pooper.
It's a pooper, super. Somebody said, that's a cleanest, we're gonna see it, right?
Yeah.
That's the cleanest we're gonna see it, so.
Brown would probably have been more appropriate, but.
So Friday, we're gonna have the dog park open on Friday. We're excited about that. We're gonna, the next couple of days, put the last kind of finishing touches on it. Just a couple of rules, I won't go over them. They'll be posted, they are posted. All dogs must be up-to-date vaccination and license through the city. Dog owners must stay in the vicinity of the park. You can't leave your dog for the day and then come back. Owners need to pick up after themselves. No choke or prong or spike collars. Kids under 14 must be accompanied by adults. No food, no more than three dogs. So you get kind of the idea of it. And then as you recall from a previous council meeting, because it's a smaller park, Dave Hart happened to be, and I didn't find out where it was, but over town over the weekend, he sent me a picture of a dog park. This looks big compared to this dog.
Oh, no.
I mean, it was, it was the size of this area in front of the dais here. It was really small. So I'm feeling more encouraged about the size of ours when I saw that one. But because it's relatively small, we have, and they're posted, small dog times, large dog times, and a couple of days during the week, we have mixed times. So we'll have that on our website. It's posted on site. Like we had talked about before, just due to COVID, we didn't want to have a lot of people come out. It's gonna be a soft opening. It'll be open as of Friday morning.
Couple questions.
Yes.
Anything about spayed and neutered dogs?
That is not something that, that most dog parks police. So we went through and, you know, we took a look at eight or 10 different dog parks. We went to Parsak to find out what they wanted to see the rules. I went up to and met with the Humane Society. It's not something that came up. Aggressive dogs for sure. It's pretty, pretty well self-police at most, you know, parks that an aggressive dog will be asked to leave. You'll get the stink eye and, you know, run out if you bring in an aggressive dog.
And then license? How, because we say that dog has to have, be licensed?
We can and will be checking for, yeah, City of Avalon licenses.
Excellent. Okay, great. So they would have that tag, I mean?
Yes. I need to get mine done.
I've got one for my dog, but it's not around his neck. Anyway, thank you. It's great, and it does look good, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it. All these dog owners. And maybe you can let the people on the, the Harbor Department can let the people know that get off their boats with their dogs, that they have a place that they can take them. And maybe they, they should have the times, so if they have a big dog or a little dog, you know, just to get that word out to the boaters. But excellent.
Is the license, does it, it needs to be a City of Avalon license, or can it be any license? Like if you're visiting with your pet, you don't need a City of Avalon license?
That would be correct.
It's only if you're a resident.
Yeah. Good. Well, that's exciting news. Okay, ears in the making. Alrighty.
I had a report.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to, first of all, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I had a really quick update. I just wanted to provide some information that came down recently over this last month. Recently, DDT and Catalina Island have been in the news, and with the rediscovery of that massive DDT waste dumping site in the middle of the ocean. And as a result of that, there's been a lot of momentum to try and, one, understand the full scope of what's happening over there, but also to figure out ways to remediate and clean that dump site up. And so recently, we were, the city was approached by Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell's office, who was asking us if we would consider formally supporting Assembly Joint Resolution 2 at the April 21 Assembly Environmental Safety and Toxic Materials Committee. And the city absolutely and emphatically said they would definitely support that. And so we had the opportunity to provide some testimony on the assembly for when that item came up. And one, I just wanted to extend out a personal thanks to Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell and his entire office. And two, also wanted to extend out a thanks to the LA County Board of Supervisors, particularly Supervisor Janice Hahn. And we have one of her representatives here in the audience today, because they were discussing it at the Board of Supervisors meeting earlier this morning, to talk about sending out support at the county level for all efforts that are basically encouraging the legislation to take necessary measures to prevent further damage, protect and preserve our vulnerable natural resources, and to protect the public health and safety with this DDT site. So just wanted to extend out a thanks. And then the second update that I had was just, in case people were following the news today, our numbers continue to go down for COVID-19 related numbers. And right now, it looks like we are eligible to enter into the yellow tier. This is actually kind of a blessing in disguise, because it'll allow for another transition before we go into a hard opening, or a full sector opening on June 15th. So we are expecting LA County Department of Public Health to be releasing some guidelines within the next couple of days, and make the formal announcement. And then when they do, we'll make sure to work with the chamber and all of our community stakeholders to disseminate that information out. So be on the lookout for that.
Yeah, and along the lines of the DDT, because some of us are getting, you know, concerns, and I'm seeing those floating around, can the city come up with some statement so that we're all kind of saying the same thing? Because our beaches are clean, our water is good. I think they need to be reinforced somehow about that.
Yeah, and that's a great idea. We're actually working right now with select community partners to come up with some of that messaging, and we should have a statement out very soon. And then once we have that, we'll pass And then once we have that, we'll pass that out to all the council.
Okay, and put it in the newspaper, wherever we can, wherever we can do it. And of course, on the chamber website, because I know, Jim, you're fielding those questions already, aren't you? Yes. So, yeah, let's all work together on this one, because that's not good. Okay. Go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, I was just going to say, since we do have Verlinda Chico here from Supervisor Hahn's office, could we?
Would you like to come up and say a few words?
After, I know there's some comments on DDT.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much for inviting me to say a few words on DDT. It was really important for the supervisor to support Assembly Member O'Donnell's item, AJR-2. And we just really want to thank the City of Avalon, particularly Councilmember LaBelle, who spoke this morning to the Board of Supervisors. I know Jim was on hold and had to disconnect, but we had a really great lineup of speakers, really powerful, very impactful. We had Dr. Chris Low, who is with Cal State Long Beach, he's a professor of marine biology, and the executive director of the Shark Lab. He provided some really great marine biology expertise. We had a representative from the USC Wrigley Institute speak about the impacts. I want to thank Tony Bujovic for also talking about the impacts to, the potential impacts to the island. But I just wanted to reiterate that the supervisor is committed to working with the Assembly member, advocating at the federal level, working with our partner Congressman Loenthal, to ensure that the EPA makes this a priority, because it certainly is. One other thing I'd like to note is that DPH advised beaches and harbors, that they would like boaters to adhere to Appendix CC private gatherings, because I guess there were, a lot of the boating community really wanted some clarification on guidelines. So per the Department of Public Health, if all the people on the boat are fully vaccinated, then they do not need to worry about physical distancing or wearing masks, as long as they are all feeling healthy. If they have any unvaccinated people on board, they will need to wear masks and strive to maintain six feet of distance between households. And this is especially important when using the indoor areas of a boat. So I just got that information. I'll probably get some more and email that out to you also, that we have all of the verbiage. But I think that is all that I have. Oh, our, our new guidelines will probably come out tomorrow on May 5th, so we'll have some more clarification on the yellow tier.
Will there be any difference in Catalina Express's operation?
It, it possibly could, because it is a ferry, it's considered a ferry and has different guidelines. That was the first thing that I thought of when, when I received that information. So I'm going to get some additional information. We'll be sure to work with Greg Baumgart on that, though.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Verlinda?
It's nice to see you be able to come back to town.
I know, I'm so excited. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And say hi to Janice for us. Okay. Okay, let's do council member reports.
Mayor, can I have my, believe it or not, I have some. Another thing about the State Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell, Scott Campbell, in his office arranged for us to have a Zoom conference call with the Assembly Member himself and a couple of his staff. And then our staff met. We had some candid conversations, and we were just really asking for legislative assistance in helping us address our financial shortfalls. So it was great. He gave us some, some ideas to follow up on, and so we are very appreciative of that. And Scott particularly, for his help. And Mr. Greenaw did tell you how the Public Works Department was coming back from 20% furlough to 10%, but also the Harbor Department has, and our maintenance crew. But I just wanted to point out that they're coming back, but we do have all of city staff, as well as all the department heads are still remaining at 20% furlough. So we are still closed down on Fridays, as well as the Fire Department is still holding with their 5% reduction in hourly wage. And then we will be working towards just two to three mornings a week doing vehicles, so I can get code out, code out on the streets more. As of tomorrow, our new pace period, we are having code out seven days a week, so.
Wonderful.
That will help. And then on my monthly meeting with Edison, we have had, I believe the mayor was involved in one of them, where we had a presentation on our water allocation process. They are going to be present at the next council meeting as a presentation only. It won't be a public hearing or anything, but just to give you an update on that process and where they stand.
Great, thank you. That's a lot of good information. All righty, council members.
I'll go first, because it's real short. I will be attending Contract City's annual municipal seminar the next three Thursdays.
Wow.
Fun.
They're only, the good thing is they're only an hour.
Okay, good. Yesenia, Lisa?
Sure. I attended the LA County, Orange County Broadband Consortium meeting on the 21st. Got to meet the other members of that team from across the Southland, and they're also having discussions with the LA EDC, which is the other entity that we had provided a letter of support to in terms of funds. And on that same note, with the broadband and connectivity group, had a meeting on the 23rd with AT&amp;T, this time to discuss further information regarding the Wi-Fi system for AT&amp;T, but then also to look at the land system provided with DSL and cable lines in homes, and just current capacity and current service levels for that. And also, just what the issues were concerning the landslide that took place, the mudslide that took place a couple of years ago in Holbox Canyon behind Silvestre and Canyon Terrace. There was a significant loss of signal and service in that region for people using direct cable lines from AT&amp;T. And so working with Jim Lutjehan, the next meeting we have will be specifically regarding that level of service, but trying to determine what happens next for them, if there's a way to increase both capacity, which is planned over the next two to three years, and also speed, which is not currently on their budget, but we're trying to see if we can change their mind on that. Met up with Q from Verizon, and Jim Lutjehan and I picked him up at the boat on Friday morning, and drove him pretty much on every single road, including Hamilton Cove. Thank you Norris Bishton for that last minute access. So he had a series of three cellphones and a laptop, and literally tested the signal on every inch of road throughout the entire community on a Friday morning, after the boats had come in. And we did that for about two and a half, three hours. He also did go out onto the pier and had some suggestions of both short-term and long-term fixes that may be possible for Verizon to enact without much need for approval and/or space. And so we're encouraged by that. We've heard great responses about the Hamilton Cove level of service that's increased with the new tower that was put in there, and are hoping that potentially changing some angles on certain Verizon towers will help improve those services. And then also looking at what are called micro towers, both for outdoor and indoor use, that may help individual businesses or households. So we'll have more to report back on that hopefully soon. I also attended, and thank you very much, Bob, for having the Active Transportation Plan workshop. That was a lot of fun to attend and talk through, and was a great conversation with a variety of members from the community, just going over what some of those concerns are and needs are, and then how we not only come up with a plan, but then also enact some changes to make people focus more on walking, biking, and other means of transportation to hop outside of those vehicles. On the 28th, I attended the LA County redistricting meeting. This is a group of 14 commissioners from across Los Angeles County that will be looking at how they redistrict Los Angeles County with updated census results. There will be a map system that all residents can use to create a sample redistricting map for LA County, and you'll be able to submit that as a suggestion or a recommendation for how you would like to see the county redistricted for the five county Board of Supervisor positions. There will still be five, but they will be potentially redrawing lines. And so how that's drawn will definitely be public input, and we'll get that information out to you guys as soon as that site is ready to be used. The other call that I had that was interesting this week was with the CPUC on tariffs, and just got some background information on the Catalina Express tariff specifically, how that works, what the processes to gain tariff information, when public input is sought, if ever, or not at all, and how the tariff works in terms of pricing structure, what the base structure is, how far up or down the express can price tickets at based on the tariff they've received. And then just had an offline discussion with Eric Baumgart, and wanted to say thank you to him, and also to Amanda, who I talked with earlier in the week. They've both been very open and communicative and helpful. If anyone does have commuter books that are just recently expired and need assistance with that, please feel free to reach out to me or to city staff. There is a phone number you can call to see if you're able to use some or all of those tickets, depending on when the book expired. And I still have more questions that we can have in discussion offline, but it was an informative set of information and was just a great to have background. One of the interesting points that was called out was there's not currently a communications list for when that tariff comes up, other than the old previous docket list, which is, you know, almost 10 years old already. And so having that level of communication, I believe the city would be on that list, but Denise, I didn't know if you could confirm if you've received communication in the past, or if the city has, when that, the docket for the CPUC comes up for the Catalina Express. And you don't have to answer that now if you're not sure, but just wanted to see what emails we should be adding to that list at their request. They were happy to add on a communication list for us, which they hadn't done before, so.
Right.
And then finally, attended the call this morning for the Board of Supervisors regarding DDT, and have been keeping up on information and data that's been coming in from Scripps Oceanographic Institute. It was actually really interesting to watch, if you have the Marine Traffic App, you can follow along with boats that are traveling throughout the channel and the surrounding waters, and actually anywhere in the world. So besides watching tankers being stuck in canals halfway around the world, you can also watch the research vessel Sally ride as it traveled from San Diego up into the harbor, and see exactly where it was going around the channel, in between San Pedro and the island and Palos Rides, and just kind of see the range that they were covering while they were out there for those two and a half weeks. It was, of course, during a couple of days of really the high wind, so they tucked into the two harbors for a little bit. But encouraged to see that come together so fast, encouraged to see the support for this, after talking with some residents over the last couple of weeks. It's been rumored for decades that that was out there, and I'm thankful that something is happening now. I'm hopeful that there will at least be some funding put behind mitigating it. The one comment that did come up from a private vendor that was interested in looking at a broadband fiber line to run in the channel, was the concern that most of the points of contact from the mainland to the island, for shortest distance, would go through the debris field of the dumping. And unfortunately, that means it's probably not going to happen, because they wouldn't be digging into laying cable and then recovering an area through that dump field. So I know that there are other options we're looking at, including fiber from San Clemente or fiber from other points of location that would make it actually even longer than it was hoping to be or planned to be. But just something to consider, it's not just impacting public safety potentially. It's not just impacting the food supply, but it's also impacting technology and other things in the channel as well. So hopefully we'll have better news over time. And, yeah, it was a busy, busy couple of weeks. And then finally, just wanted to ask a question on the, on the dog park. I know that Jim Lutjehan had mentioned online, there was findings of distemper in raccoons on the mainland. I didn't know if there's a way to check for distemper shots. I don't know that we're staffing the dog park, so it's not something where we're going to have someone asking for proof of vaccination or proof of licenses, but not sure how we communicate that to people to ensure that that is, in fact, something that they're receiving, just to make sure that that's not getting passed over this way.
I think maybe what I'll do is I'll contact our local veterinarian and try and get some insight from him on how we best communicate that, kind of signs and symptoms. And at a minimum, we could post something in regards to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. By the way, I'm up here at Jen and Jordan's house. They say hello, ask the kids, and give everyone a hug. And, yeah, doing great. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, give them our love too. That's, yeah, okay. I'm surprised the kids aren't right behind you, you know, making rabbit ears or something.
They've all popped in. I've turned the camera off during those times. They wanted to see you guys, so maybe we'll have a little visual hello in a little bit.
Okay, great. Yesenia?
Yes, mine's real quick. We were able to receive more funding for another five families. So we are now up to a total of 30 families that will be receiving $500, and we will distribute that the second week of June. And then I did also want, I know I already shouted out Dan earlier, but I wanted to do it in public, because every morning, my window faces a dog park, and I see him and the crew working hard every single morning. So thank you, guys. I'm glad it's almost there and done. And Lisa, earlier you did mention there's a phone number to check on the expired commuter books. Did you have that?
Sure. You can call, it's area code five, excuse me, 310-519. Excuse me, start over. 310-510-1212, and dial extension 1,000. It's the Catalina Express's corporate office. And then Eric Baumgart is the person to speak to. And I would plan to make sure that you give yourself plenty of time if you need to reach out for that number. That the response time can be anywhere from 24 to 72 hours, depending on timing and schedule. So make sure it's not the day before you're hoping to travel with a commuter book that's expired. But they are trying to help people as they can. I'm hoping that we can review kind of the tariffs and funding and see kind of what is, what is in there that would make it beneficial people, or find ways to help it benefit people. I know that, you know, there are a lot of people who buy a commuter book who may not go through a commuter book in a year, and maybe there's a better way we can use those funds for individual tickets. There are people who need to buy more than one commuter book a year, and maybe there's something we can do to look at that. I'm not offering suggestions or even asking for this to be on an agenda yet, because I know that there's a lot of discussion, but, but just know that they're, they're trying to help. They're trying to offset some of the time that was lost because of COVID, so.
We do have a process for, you can get a commuter card just for four tickets, so you don't have to buy a ticket book. You can just get four individual ones.
Denise, is that online anywhere, or is that something that people can access to see the information for that?
When you come to City Hall for your commuter subsidy card, at that point, we'll give you a different type of card for the four individual ones.
And it's on the application. It'll say renewal, new application, or for a round-trip card.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. That's perfect. I'll start sharing that a little more.
A lot of, a lot of information. Thank you, Lisa.
So much.
I just have a question.
Go.
Do we, have we heard anything from whether or not we will get to see the DMV?
No, there's been any communication.
No, okay.
Not from, not since they shut down with COVID.
Okay.
I could certainly reach out and see if they're going to entertain it. I don't know how much they're open on the mainland or what they're doing, so. But I'll find out, Cindy, by next meeting.
Okay, sure. I was hoping for maybe a, an October visit. Gives us plenty of months. Hopefully our restrictions will be lifted, but enough time to allow, to plan for that.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, council? No? I just, Tony Zeiler's back. So he got off the boat today, and he is back, and welcome back. And last week, he tooted the alarm. I'm assuming that was him. Okay, so anyway, so good. He did it twice, so that was very good. Just a question for further conversations about public transit. The, we have the electric vehicles, and because of the electric vehicles, is that the reason we didn't go up the hills? Do you recall?
That is correct, Mayor.
So now we don't have electric vehicles, so is there a way to relook at transportation?
Our, so the dial-a-ride can take you to anywhere you want to go. And so I know Audra is always looking to find vehicles for us of a smaller size that would be able to go the hills as well as. would be able to go the hills as well as into the terraces. But right now the dial ride and we do not have an age requirement. You just have to go down during this COVID time that you're able to sign up no matter what your age is.
Oh, good. That's a good reminder. And that's the one they call ahead?
Yes.
For pickup? Okay, great. Okay, excellent. And so kind of a fun thing, I got a text the other day from, it's called Stratoscope. And every year there's a sandwich week, which this year is held from May 24 through 5/31. And they want the mayors of each of the 88 cities to pick one. Okay, that's like damn near impossible, right? So I kind of walked around town and got some, just stopped just random people. Where do you, what's your best place? So they came up with five that were pretty consistent. The only thing I could think to do was put the names in a hat and draw one. There was just no way. You know, this is too small a town for me to say the best sandwich is here or there. So anyway, my husband picked the name and it's the Brew House and it will be their roasted turkey breast sandwich on homemade sourdough with avocado arugula, no avocado arugula, bread, onion and cheese. And so I had one today because I had never had one and it is very good. So they will be in this publication and it's also going to be on social media. So it's a little, another advertising for Avalon and it's to promote small businesses and to get us reacquainted with our city. Well, I don't think anybody's more acquainted with their city than us, but, so it's a lovely thing that's done every year. So congratulations to the Brew House. That's all. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Anything online, Michael?
I have no comments online.
The way he grabs his mic, I always think he's going to start reading something.
Me too.
No?
Or a brew.
And the interesting thing about the Brew House is they only make us sandwiches as they have fresh bread made that day. So if you want one, you got to get there pretty quick. Anyway.
I have another quick announcement.
Sure.
That the, the CKB kids are going to do a little thing on Cinco de Mayo on the stage tomorrow at 3:30.
Oh, good. Thank you. Okay. All right. Okay. Consent calendar?
We have three items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the April 6th and April 20 regular city council meetings. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $730,650 for the time period of April 12th through April 23rd. The third one is to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal 2021 third quarter treasurer's report.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. I, I just want to highlight the one thing that it says, you know, we have not received any money, how it says we have not received any money from the American Rescue Plan Act as of March 31st, but when I talked with Denise and Michael, sounded like it would be coming in two installments, correct, Michael?
That's correct.
Okay. One between, before the end of this fiscal year and then one hopefully shortly after.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Okay. Item number four, general business.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote again. That's okay. Councilmember De La Rosa? Uh oh, we have some munchkins on the screen.
Oh, hi there, kids. Hi, Wilder.
Okay, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
And Councilmember Lavelle.
Aye, with some albers.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
In, in general business, we have a few items, but I am going to tell you right now, Mayor, that I need to remove item six. That will be on a future meeting. Item seven has been requested and suggested to me to remove number seven at this time until such time, that the direction is to proceed forward and that's for the RFP for Transportation, Traffic or Vehicle Study to get clarification. So I'll leave that item for you to decide if you want to remove it until a further date. But I am removing item number six.
Okay.
Which is the ordinance for the Segway van.
Okay, great.
So Matt Baker's going to come out and he is going to go over the budget policy and our budget.
This is the second budget update. Merely, this one is just to provide an update of where we stand as far as revenues in the current year and what our reserve levels look like going into the next budget year. We're still working with department heads to kind of put together the first draft of the budget to be presented to Counsel. So department heads right now are kind of going through the individual line items and setting their budgets up and we'll be reviewing that in the coming weeks. So this is really just to kind of lay a groundwork of where we're at since there have been some changes since the mid-year budget update and I'm happy to report positive changes. And so that's going to be kind of the first portion of the presentation. The second piece is, part of my goal is eventually to have our budget to a position to where we could present it for a GFOA best budget award type award. And one of the components of that is a budget and fiscal policy. And while we do have existing budget and fiscal policies, I was going to try to take this opportunity to align ours better with GFOA's best practices. So hopefully, I don't think it'll happen with this year's budget, but hopefully in future budgets, when we're able to present for that award, you know, our, our policy piece will align with what they're looking for as far as the best budget. And so that's kind of the rationale, what we're working towards. And so I'm going to go over some of the key points kind of of those policies that was provided in the staff report as far as the, kind of the rationale for them. Again, a lot of the specific content was in our existing policies. It was really a lot of it was just restructuring it in a way to where I thought it, it made more sense to the reader. So the first slide here, let me, is a breakdown of our year-end reserves in the general fund over the last several years. So we use unrestricted fund balance as the measure for the general fund of resources we have available as far as reserves. So I'm going to use the word reserves a lot. When I'm speaking to the general fund, it's the unrestricted fund balance. So at the end of fiscal year 19, so that was the last year not impacted by COVID, our unrestricted fund balance or our reserves were just shy of 5 million. After the fiscal year ending 2020, June 30, 2020, our ending balance was four and a half million, so a decrease of a half a million. A lot of that was driven by the impact of COVID, but we actually did have a strong first eight months of that fiscal year. And so I think but for COVID, we likely would have saw an increase in our general fund unrestricted fund balance, but unfortunately that was not the case. Then in our budget that we adopted, we were anticipating unrestricted fund balance or reserves of just over 2 million. About a million of that was draws on reserves to fund just operating costs of those are salaries and benefits, maintenance, operations, contract services. And the other million was to fund planned capital outlays in the general fund as well as transfers to, the, the typical transfers to other funds. That did not include the likely transfer required to the harbor fund, which I'll discuss more later, but that's how we went from four to two. Then based on latest estimates, a combination of revenues beating where we estimated in the budget and unbudgeted savings from the furloughs that were implemented in response to the second shutdown, we're looking in the general fund for reserve levels of just shy of 4 million. And I think that's on the conservative end and I'll, I'll show you how I came to that number in a minute. Again, this is all before the transfers that'll be required to the harbor. The harbor didn't have the level of reserves that the general fund did going into COVID and there were some costs in the harbor fund that unfortunately couldn't be delayed or deferred and, and we'll go into that in more detail. So again, this is the general fund before any transfers to subsidize the harbor fund. Certainly a lot more positive than we were looking at going into the year, but as we'll address later in the presentation, we've got a ways to go to get to a, a reserve level to where we wouldn't necessarily, and the goal is for future situations like COVID, we wouldn't have to take the, the immediate drastic steps we did to leave ourselves in this position. So again, TOT is the largest revenue in the general fund. In our budget, we had TOT estimated about 70% of what I call the, the pre-COVID normal, so fiscal year 19. To date, our TOT revenues have actually been closer to 90% of normal. And I use that term normal, but I think it's also important to note that there were some hotels not online in fiscal year 19 that have since become online. And so really there's potential, you know, to, to exceed what I'm using as our normal term. And so just because we're at 90% of our, say, pre-COVID number, that doesn't necessarily mean every hotel is doing 90% of normal, but it, it does bode well for the future, you know, as we recover, that our TOT revenues could potentially grow with those hotels and without COVID. So how we came up with the low end and high end estimates there was I took what we have budgeted for the remaining three months, April, May and June, and that kind of reflects the low end of where I think our TOT revenues could come in for the year. And then I looked at the three-year pre-COVID averages for April, May and June, and that represents kind of the, the high end of what I think we could realistically achieve. And, and if you ask me where I saw us landing on the spectrum, I think it's going to be closer to the high end than the low end. But again, that's kind of the general range of where we're looking at. And so what this slide here is kind of provides a breakdown of how we went from the 2 million in the budget to the now four to 4.4 million. We're looking at potentially in general fund reserves heading into the next fiscal year. So you can see TOT is the largest source of the change, where it could potentially increase by anywhere from 650 to 834,000. So that's really decreasing the amount of draws on reserves we would need. Again, as, as Mike mentioned, the American Rescue Plan is going to be divided into two payments. We have not received it yet, but we do anticipate receiving it before the end of the fiscal year. Other revenues really makes up two items that significantly beat where we had budgeted, one being admissions tax, which if everything goes as I'm currently estimating, will beat its budget by approximately 100,000. And then the second piece is the residual and pass-through property tax. So it's a portion of the RPPTF, part of the redevelopment distribution. There, it's divided up amongst all the agencies after it gets to that point. So we do get an estimate every year and I budget off that estimate, but generally it beats the estimate. And so that contributes to about 250,000 of that number there. Sales tax revenues is projected to beat where we budgeted as well. We've already exceeded the budgeted amount with four months or three months to go. And then also there were some non-budgeted labor savings from the furloughs. And if you add all those up, we expect to enter the next fiscal year between four and 4.4 million in general fund reserves. Again, to stress, this is before any transfers to the harbor, which in later slides I'll show, will need funds in order to operate this year. And again, the last slide on, on the bottom is I do think when you look at the financials at the end of the year, it's going to be higher than that four to 4.4 because we did have some capital outlays budgeted this year that I don't think will be expended in the current fiscal year. So if that number's higher, it's because likely of those capital projects, say for Pebbley Beach Road, which may be expended this year, but it might be the next fiscal year. It depends on when those construction gets underway. So again, for the harbor, if we look at similar breakdown, but instead of unrestricted fund balance, we use working capital as our measure of available funds. Working capital is current assets, so that's cash, accounts receivable, inventory, so we don't really have those, minus current liabilities, so accounts payable, any salaries payable at year end. And so ending fiscal year 19, we had nearly 2 million in working capital in the harbor. At the end of fiscal year 20, so that was after the 30-plus months of COVID, we had a negative working capital of about 200,000 in the harbor. Some of that drawn working capital is planned as part of the major capital projects going on in the harbor, but the harbor was actually more impacted than the general fund even in the first three months as part of the shutdown. Its revenues are more tied to visitors than, than the general funds even. And so you can see in the budget we adopted, we were looking at nearly 2 million negative working capital. And so when we were at the mid-year meeting where we had the conversation about having only 200,000 in reserves, if you look at the 2 million we had in the general fund and the negative 2 million, that's how we, we came to that number. Again, now based on new revenues, we're now estimating draws required of 1.6. And again, that's on the low end and I'll show in the next slide, it may be as low as 1 million and I'll kind of show how we come to that breakdown. So again, cross-channel warfage is the biggest revenue source in the harbor. Through February, warfage revenues to the city were down approximately 900,000 if you compare them to the eight months of the last fiscal year not impacted by COVID. So July 19 to February of 20 comparing July of 20 to February 21. But compared to the budget, warfage revenues are ahead of budget by approximately 300,000 through March, so about 18% up there. So again, how we came up with the low highs, we looked at what our budget estimate was for the low and then we looked at what the three-year pre-COVID average is. The three-year pre-COVID average, I also had to adjust it for the 50 cent increase, so that's not what we actually received those years, but I factored what we would have received had the $3 rate been in effect. So you can see current estimates could be anywhere between two and a half and 3 million. And again, I think with this, it'll likely be closer to the high end of the estimate, but I just wanted to provide the range and kind of the rationale for how we came up with So again, if we start with the budget where we saw negative 2 million, but we look at our cross-channel warfage, which could be anywhere between 30 and 780,000 above where we estimated. Next biggest source of change is transfer revenue, so there is a transfer fee associated with any mooring sales. We always budget that one at a lower amount and the rationale behind that is, is it's really not predictable. It's dependent on mooring sales and the price of the mooring and in some years we have more mooring sales than others. But that 227,000 represents how much mooring sales through April already exceed the budget estimate. So we know that minimum's at least going to be met and there's likely, or there's a potential for additional mooring sales the last two months of the year. We also did receive from Metro 150,000 from CARESAC funding that can be dedicated towards the mole, as well as other revenues. And that's largely made up of rent, warfage and ad tax in the harbor that have also currently are heavy with their beat or on track to beat where we had budgeted them to be. We did have some non-budgeted labor savings from the furloughs, but you can also see the Mole One change order, 700,000 makes a big difference as far as, you know, where we're at. But again, we expect to end the year somewhere with negative working capital or negative reserves of 1.7 million to 1 million. I actually think it's going to be closer to the high end than the low end, but I kind of wanted to provide the range of where I thought it would be. Cross-channel warfage is really going to drive that because we don't expect any cruise ships until July at the soonest. So again, it's just kind of a summary of where we're at. Ending the fiscal year, we should have anywhere between four and 4.4 million in general fund reserves, but the general fund is going to have to subsidize the harbor anywhere from 1 to 1.7 million. So that would leave the general fund with the reserves after the transfer of 2.3 to 3.3 million. One thing that we'll be bringing back at a later meeting is a discussion of whether we want the general fund to loan or to just give or transfer the funds. It's going to be my recommendation to loan. The reason why we'd want The reason why we'd want the money in the general fund is it provides us with greater flexibility as far as how we can spend the money. So if the harbor gets itself in a position to where it can repay that loan, if, say, the sewer needs a major repair, that money's then in a fund to where the general fund could help out the sewer. So it's always going to be my recommendation to keep the money in the general fund when possible, so. So again, what I have on the bottom is reserve targets for the general fund and the harbor fund. The minimum targets are based on the GFOA's minimum recommendations, but again, I want to stress that each city is unique, and the GFOA is very clear that you really can't use the minimum targets without assessing your own city's unique circumstances. And so I'm going to go into detail later as to why I think we should set a higher target. And then what I have on the right is what I think a healthy reserve level would be for those two funds, and that represents about six months of operating reserves. The general fund was close to that going into COVID, but the big difference was the harbor fund was really not in a healthy reserve level, and the general fund had to make significant cuts to help, you know, offset the losses in the harbor. So again, the GFOA recommends that the governments formally adopt financial policies. We do have budget and fiscal policies. The latest ones were adopted as part of the fiscal year '20 budget, and that they address a lot of these topics. Again, my goal was to kind of take that information and repackage it in a way that's a little easier to understand for the reader. The ones in bold are the ones that I have provided in the draft along with the staff report. The italicized ones are ones where we have an existing policy, but it's not been incorporated in kind of the new format. And then eventually, the goal would be to have a budget and fiscal policy that addresses all these topics and additional topics as they arise. So one of the goals in our budget policy, and it's really going to be the driving goal that outlines all the budget policies, is achieving a structurally balanced budget. So each year, the city has adopted a balanced budget, but at least since I've been in this position, we've achieved the balanced budget by utilizing reserves. So a structurally balanced budget differs from balanced budget in that the ongoing recurring revenues are sufficient to cover the recurring expenditures, and reserves aren't being utilized for those purposes. So what I mean by recurring revenues are things we can rely on year after year. Property tax would be a good example. Non-recurring revenue would be something like a settlement from a lawsuit or a grant, one-time grant. So the American Rescue Plan, you could think of as an example there. And then also to keep in mind, some revenues kind of have two components. So for example, mooring transfer fees. Each year, we do receive mooring transfer fees, but it can range anywhere from $100,000 to $500,000 a year. So I looked at those going back the last 10 years, and that's kind of the range of where we've seen those revenues. And so we can reasonably rely on getting some transfer revenue, say, $100,000 a year, and budget off of that. But if we have revenues beyond that $100,000, those would really be non-recurring, because we couldn't rely on them year after year in our budget. Similarly, recurring expenditures are salaries benefits, and non-recurring would be one-time capital outlays. And ultimately, the goal is that your recurring expenditure, recurring revenues are sufficient to cover the recurring expenditures, and you're only funding non-recurring expenditures with those non-recurring revenues. Reserves is kind of how you can measure if we're actually achieving that structural balance, if our reserves are staying the same or increasing. It's a good indicator that we are achieving that, but if we see our reserve levels decreasing year over year, it's a sign of the opposite, that we're not in balance. So again, a couple of policy enhancement we wanted to implement to achieve this structural balance is as part of the budget presentation, we demonstrate how the recurring revenues are aligned or not aligned with our recurring expenditures. And then if we're not in structural balance, we need to come up with a plan and present it to council of how we're going over the next several years to get back into a balance. So some things to consider with this is, the first bullet really is just reinforcing that recurring expenditures, like salaries benefits, need to be covered by recurring Operating maintenance of capital purchase with non-recurring revenues, what we're really trying to emphasize there is, as we're doing these capital projects, we need to make sure that we're factoring the additional ongoing maintenance costs. So it's great if we have the funds to build a new structure, but we need to be mindful that we have the funds to maintain that structure. And then also similarly, if we're using it to purchase new equipment, we need to make sure we have the funds to maintain that new equipment, and really, we should be prioritizing updating and replacing existing equipment first. And I think an important tool for that would be to come up with a vehicle replacement schedule, and that way, we can demonstrate to council that we're achieving that. So again, some proposed enhancements to the policy with regards to revenues. One of the goals is that when we're doing our estimates for revenues, that council understands kind of the rationale, and the public understands the rationale for how we came up with those estimates. So we want to be as transparent as possible. And the reason that's important is we don't want to be achieving that balance with unrealistic targets. And so one way you can hold us accountable is if we do, if we are transparent with how we came up with those estimates. Another goal for the department needs to be a fee structure. So I know we've talked in the past about the vehicle annual permit fee and whether or not it recoups the cost to kind of provide that service. We really need to do that kind of assessment with all our fees. And the idea behind that is we need to know which fees are we subsidizing with tax revenues versus which fees are paying for themselves. So a building permit is really just for the benefit of the building owner, and so it would make sense for those types of fees to have a 100% recovery of cost, whereas other fees may really be for the benefit of the community as a whole, and council might want to subsidize some of those costs. But it's important that council knows, you know, which fees are we subsidizing versus which fees we're recovering the whole amount. And so we can do some of those individually, but it's ultimately a goal that we kind of review all our fees. Again, use of non-recurring revenues should just be to cover non-recurring expenditures only, and if we are utilizing non-recurring revenues, we need to be transparent in the budget process when that occurs. Then the use of new recurring revenues really should be dedicated first to, so when we do have a new revenue source come in, it really should be dedicated to making sure our revenues are growing as our operating costs increase first, then to build reserves up to a healthy level, and then for new projects or new services. Some of this on this slide is really just background on some of the expenditure process with the budget. So council appropriates expenditures at the fund level. The budget kind of serves as the plan for how those expenditures are going to be spent. We categorize them between labor, maintenance, contract services, and capital outlays to facilitate that review. Then departments or their designated representatives can expend the funds to achieve those goals outlined in the budget document. So only council can appropriate funds, but there are some times where transfers within funds and within departments may be required. So sometimes, a department head may classify an expenditure a certain way, but we really want to make sure we're classifying it to the most appropriate account. So there may be a situation where I, as a department, or as a finance director, will recommend a budget transfer, again, not spending any additional money, just moving from one account to another. Similarly, there are necessary and unanticipated expenditures that may arise during the year, and it's always our first goal to find savings in other accounts to cover those expenditures before looking for new appropriations. So this piece is part of the policy, and it's in our existing policy, but again, I wanted to clean up how it was presented, so it's a little easier to follow. There are some cities, and I've reviewed a number of cities' budget and fiscal policies that appropriate at the fund level, and any movements within are really at the discretion of the city manager. Ours is a little more restrictive, but it does provide, I think, better oversight for that purpose. So for any new appropriation, we need to come to council, but for any transfer within, as long as no new funds are being spent, we have different levels of authority. And again, this is what we're proposing, and this is what was in the existing policy. You know, we are open to suggestions if the amounts or the nature want to be revised. So right now, we have council approval required for any transfers between personnel and non-personnel accounts. And so a perfect example of that would be in fiscal year '20, we had a budgeted position of a senior accountant. We had that position vacant, and so we did do a budget transfer to hire a financial consultant. That was over $10,000, so it did come to council, and ultimately was approved by council. Between departments or accounts within the same fund in excess of $50,000, we've never had that situation, or at least since I've been here, but the rationale is that if you're changing to that amount, it might change the nature of the services being provided, and so council really should be involved if we're doing a change to that level. Then the third one is between capital projects over $100,000. So an example would be the N-Flow came to council in December 2019. It wasn't anticipated in the fiscal year '20 budget, but just due to its condition, it became more of a priority, and so we paid for that by transfers from, I believe, the Dingey Dock project that was budgeted in that fiscal year. And again, because it was over $100,000, it went to council for approval. So city manager approval is required for any personnel to non-personnel transfers less than $10,000. Really, that one's most common is workers' comp. We get an estimate when we're doing the budget, but sometimes the actual comes in over, and so if there's a, you know, nominal amount, we wouldn't necessarily take that to council if we need to transfer from one account to another to make up for that increase. Between departments within the same fund under $50,000. So again, if multiple departments are getting involved, the city manager needs to be aware. Between accounts within the same fund and department, between 25 and 50, and again, just because we're getting into a higher dollar amount, we want the city manager to be aware. And then for any transfers between capital projects under $100,000 would require city manager approval. And a good example of that one would be if we had budgeted, say, a million in the current year on a project and $500,000 the next year to finish the project, and we're ahead of schedule on construction, we could then transfer the $100,000 from the prior year without having to stop the project and come to council. And so that's the rationale for that one. Then lastly, any transfer under $25,000 within the same funder department would go through my office or myself, and those are typically the ones where someone might classify something as training and travel, but it's more appropriate in membership dues. And so that's kind of the rationale for those. Again, we can talk about limits and dollar amounts now, or, you know, anytime before we present the policy to adoption, but that's kind of the rationale for those. So fund balance guidelines. The GFOA recommends that we establish a formal policy on the level of unrestricted fund balance that should be maintained. So again, the fund balance is kind of our measure of available resources. There are some differences between how fund balance is presented in our financials and how they're presented for budget purposes, but they're generally measuring the same thing. GASB 54 recommends a minimum of two months of operating expenditures as a fund, as a reserve level. The next slide I'm going to go into is why I think the two-month level isn't sufficient given Avalon's unique situation. So some of the factors to consider, and really, the GFOA stresses not to just take the minimum amount at face value, but really assess your own city's situation. The predictability of its revenues and volatility of expenditures. You know, if COVID's taught us anything, is that, you know, we are on an island, and in some ways, it's, you know, we're more susceptible to disruptions, whether they're a natural disaster or pandemic. And our revenues, because they're so visitor-dependent, as opposed to, say, property tax, there's more possibility for fluctuation. Similarly, perceived exposure to significant one-time capital outlays. You know, we have an aging infrastructure here, and I think that's true for most cities, but we need to make sure we have funds to meet any emergency needs. And then potential drain upon general fund resources from other funds. And this one's really key. If all our funds had a healthier reserve level, maybe the six-month reserve level would be more than sufficient. But, you know, if the other funds aren't in a strong position, it's really the general fund's the backstop, and so that's why I would caution on the high end of reserves. Potential impact on bond ratings is another, and then also commitments and assignments that are included in the unrestricted. So that is if council had a particular purpose to use some of that money, you know, even if they had the ability to use it for other purposes, just something to consider. So again, in the policy, we had five months approximately kind of going into the COVID year, and the proposed policy would include a recommended level of six months, but that's really contingent that those other funds also have healthy reserve levels. So the key thing on this slide is really that if we are going to be utilizing reserves in any year, what we need to do as staff is provide a plan to council of how we are going to replenish those reserves, because if we don't have a plan to replenish those reserves, we could end up in a cycle where every year, we're depleting more and more of those reserves. And so it's important that, you know, there are situations that come up where utilizing reserves are necessary, and that's what they're there for. But we just want to make sure that if we are utilizing those reserves, there is a plan, you know, whether it's reducing expenditures or identifying new revenue sources, that there's a plan to kind of get back into balance. So then, similar to reserves in the general fund, working capital targets for enterprise funds. Again, working capital is our current assets minus current liabilities. Similar to general fund reserves, you know, those are essentially the backstop if we have unexpected drops in revenues or new costs that occur during the year. So some of the things that the GFOA recommends considering, and this is kind of what I use as part of the rationale for developing the reserves, is strength of collection practices, historical consumption of inventories. The ones in bold are the ones I think are particularly relevant to us. Support from the general government, transfers out, cash cycles, customer concentration. So cash cycle's a good example would be in our sewer, saltwater, solid waste. We get our payments through the county property tax process, and so we get a major payment each year in December, but that really means the first six months of the year, we are utilizing our working capital to fund operations until we get that December payment. Similarly, we get a second major payment in April, so we don't get kind of the cash evenly throughout the year. We get lump payments, and so we need those working capitals to be able to kind of fund during those periods. Customer concentration, the harbor, I think, is a prime example of this. You know, prior to COVID, we had really one cruise operator generating approximately 10% of our general fund revenues. So if they made a business decision, you know, really, it's out of our control to an extent, and that could have an immediate and significant impact on our revenues. And so that's why we'd want a healthier reserve to be able to weather kind of a change like that that's out of our control. Demand for services, control over rates and revenues, asset age and condition, control over expenses. Again, this is, I think, a good example in the harbor, is we have a lot of public safety costs and ongoing maintenance costs in the harbor that, you know, even if there are fewer visitors, we aren't necessarily able to scale down to the level of visitor drop. You know, we need a lifeguard service, whether we have half-full beaches or full beaches. You know, we weren't able to get any reduction, but even if we did, it likely wouldn't be to the level of visitor drop. So when there are situations where there's limits to how much we can control our operating expenditures, to kind of offset that, we'd want to look to have more reserves. expenditures, to kind of offset that, we'd want to look to have more reserves. The last three, plans for working capital. So if we have the Mole project coming up, and we're only at, say, the six-month reserve level, and we're planning on drawing on it to pay for that, then, you know, we'd have to take that into consideration. So again, what I've proposed in the policy is six months of operating reserves in the harbor. Sewer salt water and solid waste, three months. The GFOA minimum is 45 days, but again, you know, due to various reasons we discussed, I don't think the minimum amount would necessarily be appropriate for our situation. And then lastly, just to note, transit is a enterprise fund, but it's historically been heavily subsidized by the general fund. And so really, we'd be looking kind of at general fund reserves to offset any shortfalls there. And so that's why I don't have a minimum level for that enterprise fund. So I guess in summary, we're still developing the budget for the next fiscal year, and it's still our goal to present to council a structurally balanced budget. We should be demonstrating, and it's my plan to do so, and when we present the budget is to show how non-recurring revenues are being used, as well as the plan to restore reserves to target levels. And then this budget policy is kind of a work in progress. You know, I am looking for input, even if not tonight offline. And we'll continue to enhance it, you know, as topics come up to better align with best practices.
That was a lot. But you know what? The what you're telling us, though, is what you have been saying, you know? I mean, you know your stuff, and that's how you've been doing it before.
And the key to the policy is, you know, I have tried to be transparent in how I come up with the estimates. And, you know, a lot of these things we are putting into practice, but the good thing to have it in policy is if, you know, if someone else is in the position, they have a guideline, you know, for what council's expectations are. And if it's not what this document currently says, it can be evolved to meet what guidelines you're looking for.
Just really quick before you summarize. So what is the prize that you're talking about, the award we were yet?
It's not all that. I mean, it's bragging rights for finance directors, I guess you could say. Typically, they just put it in the first page of their budget that they received this award. And I don't think there's any monetary prize or anything like that.
It would still be nice.
And there is a similar one for our audited financials. And this year, we did add a limited statistics section in the back, and we, you know, did make some changes as far as making sure we had the MDNA section and transmittal letter. And again, you know, we're not there yet, and it still might be a couple of years, but it's my goal to eventually get us to where we're at least in consideration for those types of things. And again, I think what's helpful is then whoever's in this, you know, position, not that I'm going anywhere, but, or hopefully not, but the goal is then to, you know, to really institutionalize the knowledge, so it doesn't matter who's in this position. You know, they have a guide for, you know, what the expectations are, and, you know, they kind of have a template to follow.
Right, great. Sorry.
Matt, I'm encouraged by all of this, and this is something we talked about before I got elected. It's something we talked about during the budget process so far. And I think you have an amazing start to this. I'm encouraged to see. I think it makes the budget process much more understandable to the general public as well. I think that's one of the best goals about this, is just understanding exactly what the levels of the budget are and how the city is interacting financially. And I'm encouraged by the work that you've done so far, and I'm excited to see more. So I know I'll have notes at some point and have read through this a few times already and just penciled some stuff in, so I'll make sure to get those to you over the next couple of weeks. But I'm, as always, impressed with both your knowledge and the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll head back.
Any other questions for Matt?
Well, no, so you've discussed best practices for budget. Okay, well, I think you've discussed them, and I think it makes sense. And then it says discuss updated revenue estimates and priorities to incorporate in upcoming. Sounds, I mean, it sounds like you've done this in this presentation and less, and not having that document in front of us to go through it and whatever. I mean, it all makes sense.
And we're not adopting anything tonight.
Right.
So, you know, if, you know, you do have questions, and maybe it's a better discussion to have it offline, you know, we certainly can do that. And I guess since I'm up here and we are talking, we are, you know, working to develop the budget, and really kind of the goal and the kind of the guidelines I've given to the department heads is that I recognize that kind of the staffing level and the service level we cut was pretty drastic and maybe not sustainable long-term.
Right.
On the same time, you know, the budgets prior, while not significant draws on reserves, we were drawing on reserves to, you know, fund our operations. And so kind of the guidelines I've given to council or to the department heads is to build back towards normal with this budget, but we're not going to be at 100% because I don't want to be at 100% because we weren't structurally balanced in prior years. And we need to start, you know, building back those reserve levels. But with that being said, I would also encourage if there are priorities for departments in the budget, I don't know if now's the time to have it, but, you know, we are in the process of developing them, and we are looking for council's input. We will be discussing at future meetings, but if there's anything between now and then, we can also take that into consideration as we develop the budget.
Well, just even thinking about you're wanting to get to the $9 million reserve, I think that was your number?
Yep.
In a perfect world, how many years? Okay, not at Utopia, but would you say, oh, maybe that's attainable within two, three, five years? What are you thinking?
I mean, my, my goal would be three. I think there's going to be some challenges there, and I don't know if we'll necessarily have six months in all funds. But again, you know, if the harbor had a healthier reserve level kind of going into COVID, it would be less dependent on the general funds reserve level, and maybe six months is, you know, a high target. But again, I think, I think what the goal is and kind of the rationale when I came up with that number is, in an ideal world, there will be another crisis, and hopefully it's more than three years out, but, you know, there is no guarantees. And the second piece to it is I'd want to be in a position where the next time this happens, we wouldn't necessarily have to take the drastic and immediate actions we took this time, and we could still, you know, maintain a more normal level of service and, you know, have the resources to, you know, better assist the community during a challenge. And, you know, there are some things we weren't necessarily able to do because we didn't have the funds to do so. And so it, you know, I'm always going to, you know, push for that high level because then, you know, we'll just be in a better position, you know, when the next crisis occurs. It's going to be tough to do it in three years, but I do plan on the budget process, try to show, you know, how we're going to work towards, you know, achieving that. You know, it's going to be tough to do it in three years, but that's right now kind of what I'm looking for. I don't know if it's, you know, necessarily achievable in three, but I think it's something we need to really strive for, because there's no guarantee, you know, there won't be a COVID 21.
Right.
And so, you know, it's, you know, the goal should be, so when the next one comes, we're in a better position heading into it.
Yeah, totally get it. Council, or is there any comments on the, on your e-screen or whatever you call it?
I have no comments.
Okay, great. Okay. Council, we're good?
Mayor, I'd just like to make the comment that Matt lives and breathes this stuff, and he has done a phenomenal job, and he's always updating city staff, department heads on where we're at, what we need to do, and just all my department heads that with their leadership in their departments, that I feel like the city has come to a whole other level, and I'm very appreciative of them.
Well, I'm really glad that we're not looking at $200,000 at the end of June.
Yes.
That is amazing.
And, you know, a lot of, you know, things worked out, not, you know, as perfectly as they could, but, you know, my hope is that, you know, the next time we're in a stronger position going in, and so we can, you know, do things differently, you know, as far as level of service through a challenge like this.
Yes, yes, right. Awesome. Okay, thank you, thank you. Item number five.
Okay, item number five is going to be a first reading of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title IV, Chapter IV, Articles 17 and 19 of the municipal code. And that's regarding the maximum length and the weight. At the April 20th city council meeting, the council directed staff to amend the code to remove the weight of it that we had in there in a couple places. It was different weights, so we removed that. And also to amend the length and to increase it to 130 inches. You also allowed autoettes that exceeded 130 inches and had already registered during the vehicle season. And we had approximately, there was 18 last time, but there was one more, so I made sure it said approximately and to be provisionally permitted. And those new, those classes of vehicles will not be able to be resold or transferred. Then by consensus, the city council directed the city staff to not permit any new autoettes that exceed that 130 inches, and we have had a couple come forward that have been turned away. Then while updating different sections of the code for this, we located an outdated version, which was Title IV, Chapter IV, Article 19. It had still the maximum length of the autoette in there of 110 inches, so, and also the maximum weight of 1,300 pounds. In other sections, it was 1,800 pounds. And most importantly, I want to note that it said no more than four passengers. So by you allowing the 130 inches, it could be a six-seater passenger thing with that fold-up backgate. So we have had concerns expressed by one of the golf cart persons that sell them, that they do worry about the six-seater because of the stability of the six people in the body of it. So I just wanted to mention that, and if we could just go through the sections of the code, and I'll just tell you exactly where to look. So in Section 2, 1C, which is on the second page of the ordinance, we have made sure it said 130 inches there. Then in Section 210, which is on the bottom of Page 3 of the ordinance, it's autoettes registered and permitted between February 1st and April 20th, 2021. That are greater than 130 inches but less than 145 are prohibited to be sold or transferred once the autoette exceeds its useful life with its current registered owner. It is required to be removed from the city. And then in Section 3, in 3A, we have just removed the weight of no more than 1,800 pounds and increased it to 130 inches. And then one more section that was amended, that is Section 4, where same thing, we removed the weight, the inches, but we also said that it was, it said four passengers, so we got rid of that and put six passengers. So this would be a first reading. We would waive all the other further readings of the ordinance if the council is so inclined.
I just have one question on Section 2, Number C. Commercial autoette permits, one commercial autoette permit may be granted. I guess the question is the may be granted to any person or organization, da-da-da-da-da, for use in connection with a commercial enterprise. But we're not giving out commercial ones like water, are we? So when you say may be granted...
They have to apply for a commercial autoette, and you have to go to, before the vehicle hearing, and you have to show that you actually have a business and that it's, that you have another, no other vehicle, whether it's a full-size or an autoette, to, that would be able to do what your business needs.
I guess when it just says may be granted, it sounds like, ah, you know, kind of positive.
Maybe, means that you could be turned down.
Maybe, yeah, exactly. Okay, any comments on, from Michael or from council?
I have no comments.
Okay, council?
The only comment that I will add, and I will not be voting in favor of this decision just because of my previous vote on the change in general without the information beforehand, is when we drove through Hamilton Cove, the number of golf carts that were already off of the parking space designed for 120-inch autoettes was probably seven out of every eight vehicles that we passed by. They're hanging off of the parkway into the street in Hamilton Cove, already making the narrow streets even narrower for vehicles. So I know we were in the city van and could pass through most areas, but then someone had stopped a golf cart on the same street, and we barely were able to fit through that because of the overhang of the vehicles in the parking space adjacent to where we were driving. So, and then we also did receive a concern regarding Bahia Vista and their parking structure underneath the building being built for lengths of 120 inches and not being able to necessarily permit that. I know those are both private spaces and private parking, so maybe we just need to have a discussion with them of, you need to, if you have a strict code that you need to enforce because of your parking length, that's up to your entity or your board to do. But just a heads up that there may be some concerns because of that change.
Can I make a question or make a comment on that? In that Hamilton Cove, Bahia Vista, Sol Vista, Canyon Terrace, they all have homeowners associations, and the homeowners' associations can make the rules as to what they will allow. So I, to me, those associations can say, I'm sorry, you can't have a golf cart. I mean, that's, that's all part of living in those communities. I mean, yeah.
That's perfectly okay with me. I'm just pointing it out, we did receive one letter from a person at Bahia Vista, and that was just my experience there, just part of the discussion.
And that was my, that was my reply to the letter that we did get, in that homeowners' associations can set their own policies for vehicles in their property, such as some homeowners' associations don't allow CUPs. So, you know, I am going to put it back onto the HOA to decide what they want to do.
And the road, the road at Hamilton Cove, in Hamilton Cove, is that their private road? Oh, yeah, so they're hanging over on their road, they're not hanging over on ours, which is good. Okay. So is there a motion to introduce and waive?
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title IV, Chapter IV, Articles 17 and 19 of the Avalon Municipal Code, modifying the maximum length and weight of an autoette.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. No comments, we'll call for the vote.
Michael, is there any public comment?
I don't have any.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
No.
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item 7.
So for the record again, that we are removing item number 6.
Yes, thank you. And so, number 7, do we want to discuss this, or?
I just asked that we hold it over because I actually didn't realize it was going to be as quick as it came up. I have, and very true, at the last council, last couple council meetings, we've talked about having a transportation study. However, I really did not personally realize it was going to come up so quick. That being said, I have seven and a half years of notes that I would like to personally refer to and have a conversation with city staff ahead of time, and actually bring back meat and potatoes to a conversation of items that, you know, since this was one of my concerns, is to actually like spend the time with staff first and bring that back, and then let council further give input. And I know Lisa has a lot of items that she would like to add in as well. Because city council meeting is not a study session, it's a decision-making process, I had thought it most appropriate to pull it, and we could at least start with more meat and potatoes to make it more of a decision. And if the council felt it was more appropriate for us to create a study session and allow the public to come in and have comment on that, I'm certainly not opposed to that as well. But that's the reason I asked to pull it.
I don't disagree with you. Denise had mentioned pulling it, and I was surprised, thinking that maybe somebody didn't want to move forward with it. And your reasoning makes sense to me. I don't actually have any issue with it being a public study session as well. I don't actually have any issue with it being a public study session as well. I think, you know, between your notes, between our notes, between some of the feedback we received from the community, that it may be beneficial to that, but I also think if we can start with at least getting some of those more detailed notes to Denise for information, that that would be beneficial. So I'm okay if you want to hold it over until the next meeting, and we can meet offline to discuss more details and have a better item to decide on, that's fine with me.
If you can, then you can share the meat and potatoes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, then we'll hold that one over. I don't know if it will be by next time, depending on how slow you cook the meat and potatoes.
Whenever the, whenever we have a chance to meet, and if we, if we feel it's appropriate to do it.
But the other thing I don't want us to get into is pushing it further and further down.
No, I don't, I think there's momentum now, so, but I, I don't, we're not at a stage where it's appropriate to ask for city funding, so that's really what this meeting is for.
Right, and I asked kind of what it would cost, and we could be looking at a hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Well, that's where I wanted to go out for that, though, was to see what the scope of this is that we want to do. I mean, there may be potential for it to be much smaller than we think it is, there may be potential for it to be much more expensive than it is, but we won't be able to go after grant funding unless we have an idea of what we're looking to do in the first place. So even though we do not have the city budget to move forward with this, I would like to see if we can have a scope of work and an RFP potentially put together, or even in draft, to be able to jump on something when this does happen. But if we don't have that understanding in place of what we're looking to find out, we can't move forward in getting grant approval or having a project ready to go on the books already.
Right, right.
It will be a long process, and it was not going to be budgeted, just so you know, for this fiscal year, the earliest would be fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, all right, so now we will go into closed session.
We have two items on closed session, public employee appointment, title city clerk, public employee appointment, title city manager.
And we'll give you all, and I didn't even ask if the city attorney had anything to say today, I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Did you already go to Tennessee, Nashville?
Yes, I went to Nashville this last weekend for my daughter's graduation, it was fantastic celebration, and it is really different out in Nashville. There were thirty thousand people in downtown, packed together like sardines, and we saw five masks the entire time we were there. So it was just amazing.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you're home safely, and good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Aye, everyone.
We're back from closed session and there's no reportable action. Meeting is adjourned.